Good afternoon. Let's call the meeting to order for the March 9 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Protam Muldoon is currently absent.
Thank you. On to current business, first item we have is just clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Brenner, do you need clarification regarding any items?
I think I did. Can you come back?
Okay. Councilmember O'Neil?
No.
I have one. I just want to, because I don't know if anyone's going to pull item number four, I just wanted to clarify, the public process on this is that this item will be going, if the council decides today that this item will be going to the Planning Commission, is that correct? Where's Simone? I guess Simone is the person to answer that. Mr. Juerges?
No, this is a city, there's two items tonight. So, one is a city council policy, so it'll be your policy. If you adopt it, it finishes. And then the other item is a resolution to initiate a code change, so staff will go back and start working on that code change. That's those two items tonight.
And then that item goes to the Planning Commission?
Eventually it will. Once we do the code change, it will go to the Planning Commission, correct?
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Councilmember Blom, any items?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Duffield?
I have none.
And I have none.
Brad, it was, it was item four that I had a question on, also for Simone. Tell me, can you just clarify for the public a little bit more about what we're actually doing here? Because the misperception is that if we pass this, then things can be done just administrally from your office that we will not necessarily see or vote on. And I'd like you to clarify a little bit more about what this actually does.
Certainly. It is a, it is a, you're taking a position on housing, on the production of housing. And really, this policy sets the tone of that you're encouraging housing. And it looks at three different categories. One is the encouraging the production of ADUs. And we've talked about ADU production and how do we encourage that? So, one of the items in the policy is the possibility of waiving permit fees. So, for example, if you were to adopt that policy, we would come back at a later time with a resolution to waive permit fees. So, that's one item. The next item is asking staff to review all mixed-use opportunities. You know, where are those opportunities where we can add housing for mixed use, mixed uses? So, this is a position that you're taking, and including hotels. And we talked about the hotel industry, how they need some kind of, they need some assistance too, in looking at how do they can reposition themselves as far as adding value. Your, tonight's approval, if you were to approve the item, you're not waiving any of the code items at all. You're setting a position on housing production. We will take your policy. We would go back and look at where can we encourage housing production. ADUs is a prime example. How do we go ahead, go forward and encourage that production of ADUs? So, I don't look at any of these items this evening as waiving any of the code requirements, waiving or circumventing Charter 423.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, I, that was not the intention when I brought it up at the last, at the last study session. I don't, I don't see this as doing that either. I saw that, I saw those concerns. I didn't, I didn't understand it to be that, that way. To the extent there are even projects that come forward because of this change, with the exception of an ADU, which can be done at the staff level, a project still has to go through CEQA, it still has to go through public hearings. I mean, this is not a project-specific policy change. It's, anything that would normally be going to us or the Planning Commission still goes to us or the Planning Commission. This doesn't, this doesn't change any of that. So, I appreciate that clarification. I saw those questions. I didn't understand that at all. I would also just note real quick, just because I've actually gone to all those meetings, for the, all of these things have been discussed at the Housing Subcommittee, some of them many, many times, actually. And so, it's, I just wanted to point out, this, these, all of these, all three of these items have been discussed and discussed some, in some ways fairly extensively at that Housing Elements Subcommittee. So, I just, this is not the first time people are seeing those, any of these. Right, and it'll, oh yeah, it'll continue to be discussed. Anyway, I, thanks for that clarification.
All right. Any other clarifications needed? Okay, moving on. We've got an overview on the code enforcement program.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good afternoon, councilmembers. Simone Juerges, your Community Development Director. With me, I have John Murray, who is our acting code enforcement supervisor, who will be giving the presentation. So, tonight is just an overview on the city's code enforcement program. I'm going to give you some stats and information. At the end of it, I'm going to come back up here and ask you some specific questions, if you'd like to change anything that you saw this evening, and we have some suggestions on making some code changes. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. John Murray.
Good evening. My name's John Murray. I'm the acting code enforcement supervisor. This slide is our mission statement. The one thing I want to touch on while it's up on the screen is that with every case we have, our ultimate goal is compliance. We want to work with the residents and the business owners to get compliance and, and keep Newport the beautiful city that we all know and love. A little bit on the history of our program. Council policy K9 encourages our staff to aggressively pursue violations and, and keep our compliance states, you know, at a minimum, but still allowing due process for our defendants. And in June 2012, we created additional tiers, so a two-level system of citations, and I'm going to touch on that on the next slide. So, tier one are our most common violations. Most of our cases and citations are handled under the tier one level. Some of the most common would be trash, construction issues, noise. You can see the first violation is $100, second is 200, third is 500. We do have the tier two program that came about in 2012, so that's short-term lodging, use permit violations, and discharges. Your first violation there will be 1,000, second 2,000, and third 3,000. We have two different styles of enforcement, as you see on the bottom. The majority of our, our cases come about on a reactive enforcement. So, that is calls, emails, online complaints from our residents and business owners. Some of the most common would be zoning, signage, property maintenance. We also do proactively enforce, which means if we're, we're driving around and we see, you know, water quality issue, or a gas leaf blower, unpermitted construction, then we're going to pull over, whether we have a complaint or not, and, and handle that case. We also do a monthly planeclothes inspection of our bar and restaurants for, for use permit compliance. And we are also doing multi-night sweeps of Newport Island for parking, noise, and short-term lodging issues. A lot of people ask all the time, what do we enforce? So, property maintenance is, is a big issue, water quality, short-term lodging, zoning and land use. Another thing about our department is we're quick to be able to pivot when issues come from the state level. So, when the drought came about, we became the drought police overnight, and we were up every morning at 5:00 AM looking at sprinklers. When COVID hit, we were doing the emergency use permit inspections. We were knocking on 15 doors a day, looking for unpermitted short-term rentals when that was prohibited. So, our department has the ability to, to pivot very quickly and handle whatever issues are, are occurring in the city at that time. But when we look at our numbers from 2020, what was our, our most numerous cases? Number one is always trash containers. It's, every year, it's the leader for complaints that we get, and it's as simple as people don't bring in their trash cans. So, they're left out in the alley or the street, and that is, the, those are almost all reactive. We get calls for that every single day, sometimes blocks at a time. You'll see construction noises up there, that's another big issue. Most of those are permitted job sites where they're starting too early, they're working too late, or they're just, you know, causing obstructions in the alley while they're working during legal times. You see, we have, short-term lodging has almost 200 cases, so we're on pace to, to go beyond that this year. And then you see gas leaf blowers in there as well, that's a, another call. Those are almost all reactive as well. But you can see 2019 and 2020, we're pretty consistent across the board, as far as cases and citations go. This year, we're already at 690 cases as of March 1st and 150 citations. So, short-term lodging in 2020, we had a total of almost 200 cases. We issued 66 citations, and our police department assisted us by issuing 20 DACS. A DAC is a disturbance advisement card. That is when the police get called out to your property, and you're, to follow up on a noise disturbance. So, they have the option to issue a warning, a DAC, or a LUGO. So, if the party's louder than something that just deserves a warning, then they will go ahead and issue the DAC. Or if they've already given you a warning that night, and they get called back a second time, they will issue the DAC or the LUGO at that time. So, they did 20 on short-term rental properties in, in 2020. But we launched our short-term lodging hotline on October 1st, 2020. You can see the number there to the left. And what we're seeing since that launch is, most of the complaints are about noise. And the, the value of the hotline is, they get the call, and they immediately contact the 24/7 contact for that property. So, we're holding the property owners and their representatives responsible to, to bring that property into compliance as soon as possible. So, that's the, been the value of that program. You can see we're also getting a decent amount of parking complaints as well, to the hotline, and we've issued 15 short-term lodging citations since, since October 1st.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask something?
Yes.
Going back there, do we, do we know where the, you know, generally speaking, where the, or actually specifically speaking, the properties that are getting the most complaints through the hotline?
Yes.
Where, where are they for the most part?
The peninsula would be, would be up, up to West Newport. So, from 32nd to West Newport would be the bulk of the complaints.
Okay. Thanks.
But we do have an appeal process every time we issue a citation. So, every citation that we issue, the defendant has 30 days from the date of service to appeal. These appeals go before an independent hearing officer, it's not an employee of the city. And when it comes to short-term rental permits, after two citations, you're, you're subject to a suspension hearing. We do have to allow that 30-day period to exhaust before we can hold that hearing. This is our tier one enforcement procedure. An example of this would be a trash can case. We would conduct a site inspection, confirm we have a violation. We would then issue a notice. The standard day for compliance is a seven-day period. That allows time for the, the notice to be received by the defendant and make any corrections that are necessary. When it comes to tier one, we'll usually give them a second notice prior to issuing a citation. That would be another seven days. So, by the time they're cited, they've had 14 days to comply. And every citation, as I said, is subject to a 30-day appeal period. Should note that after the first citation's issued, they do get a seven-day compliance. It's not 30 days. So, we can still cite the second and third time while they're in that 30-day appeal period.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, I just want to understand, so this is tier one, so these are like trash can complaints, they're?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're saying we give a notice, and the property owner has seven days to bring in their trash cans? Is that how I read this?
Yes.
And then if they don't do it, they have seven more days?
Yes.
Now, who, what entity mandates seven days? Is that state US Constitution, state constitution, or is that our municipal code?
Our municipal code doesn't mandate any specific number of compliance time. We can, we can choose whatever we have. Seven days is our standard, just standard.
What is typical in cities?
Seven days is very standard. Many cities do even longer, 15 to 30.
But this is an, an area of, of our quality-of-life framework that is, has been important to residents, because they call. There's so many people who call. It's the number-one reason people call. So, I'll just put this in aside for the thought, we'll come back to it, that maybe seven days is too long, maybe 48 hours, 72 hours, but something less than two weeks could be a remedy there. Okay, thank you.
So, moving on to the tier-two enforcement procedures, these would be your short-term lodging properties. We're going to do a site inspection, and if we confirm a violation, there, there is no warning notice, it goes straight to a citation, and that would be a $1,000 fine. Again, they have the 30-day appeal rights for every citation we issue. Any second or third violations would, would up to 2,000 and 3,000 respectively.
Oh, John, so we had, did I see 66 citations? Was that last year for STL? Right?
Yes.
And so, those were 1,000 each?
When the new ordinance came into effect, they went up to 1,000. Prior to that, they were 250, 500, and 1,000 was the, the tiers for them.
Do you have any idea of how many have been given out at 1,000?
15. Or that, sorry, that's the hotline. So, no, not off, I don't off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Have, have we started revocation or suspension hearings against anyone?
We have one property that's received their second citation, and they're in their appeal period, and we just got word today that they will be appealing. So, that would be the one that's closest, but we haven't gone to a suspension or revocation hearing yet.
Where, where's that one?
That property is in West Newport.
In, on Newport Island, or in, just, just in West Newport?
No, in the 70s streets.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Dixon?
Back to the trash question, and tied into short-term rentals. For all intents and purposes, a short-term rental is like a hotel. What is the trash rules around commercial entities such as hotels? We have similar?
They use commercial haulers, so they're, they're using dumpsters, so they're not placing them out for collection. They're on it, picked up on a schedule.
All right, so just, some, for some consideration, is that short-term rentals are a commercial entity in the middle of a neighborhood, and so maybe there should be some different rules that apply to some of these neighborhood common, heretofore common neighborhood disturbances, but this is now a hotel-like entity, enterprise, that perhaps we should look at it differently? All right, thank you.
So, this is our, a slide on our staffing. We currently have three full-time employees. We work Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 5:30. We have a part-time staff member who covers Fridays and the weekend days. And then we currently have a contract employee who works Thursday from 6:00 PM to Monday at 3:00 AM, and her main focus is short-term, short-term lodging enforcement. So, she's getting contacted by our hotline and following up reactively and proactively with, with our short-term lodging properties. And I'm going to turn it over to Simone at this time.
So, just wanted to close it out here and just get the council members' thoughts. You know, thank you, John, you did a great job. With our proactive enforcement, if there were any thoughts from the council, if they would like to see us to do anything more than we, what we've talked about tonight, I wanted to get your thoughts on just our staffing for our nighttime. And so, we, right now, we have our pilot program of four nights, so those are four evenings, at a cost is, is about $104,000 a year. We would like to ask the council, if that's something you want us to continue, we'd like to add that to the budget for the next budget cycle, starting in June. And if you'd like us to boost that up to seven nights per week, that's a cost of about an additional $182,000 that we would have to budget for. I'd like to get your thoughts on the appeal time for citations, and I did speak with our City Attorney's Office. You know, we, there is an opportunity to reduce the appeal timeframe from 30 days to 21 days, but that's really the minimum. You know, beyond that, it's just not going to be, it's not legal. You have to give the defendant the, the time to appeal the citation. And then get your thoughts on just increasing the tier-one fines. We won't, we're not recommending any significant change, but maybe from 100 to 200, and 200 to 300 on the tier-one fines. And Councilmember Dixon, you, you brought up some good points with regards to that, those notices too, so I wanted to get your feedback on those.
Mr. Brenner?
As I understand, part of the problem with parking violations is that they're parking on the sidewalks. And Simone, maybe it was you that told me that we would have to change our municipal code to make that illegal in order for them to be cited for parking on the sidewalk? Is that a pervasive problem throughout the city? Because I know, you know, we, we have to treat our citizens the same way we treat our visitors. So, is that a pervasive problem, or is that more at the short-term rentals?
So, the, the parking on the sidewalk, it's really parking on that driveway approach, where that driveway kind of dips down, and it serves as the sidewalk. So, we've seen vehicles kind of parking on the driveway, really blocking that public access. So, that, that blockage, which is in the vehicle code, is not in our municipal code. So, the only individuals that have the right to cite or write a ticket is your sworn police officers. They have that sworn duty to enforce the vehicle code. Mr. Murray and his team don't have that enforcement capability. So, we have to take that provision and put it into the city's municipal code, so therefore we could have maybe our parking enforcement vendor, Ameripark, have that authority to cite and give parking tickets for blocking that driveway, which is an extension of the sidewalk.
So, we know about that one. Do you think it is, are there others throughout the city where people are parking, blocking the sidewalk?
And I'll turn to Mr. Murray. I think you had a better sense of, I think you've seen it throughout.
You run into that a lot on East Bell Boulevard as you're heading towards the wedge. A lot of people do park on the aprons there and block the sidewalk as well in that location.
But, but sometimes they're on the apron, but they're not on the sidewalk, many times, right?
That's correct. That is correct. But I do see a lot of people that don't quite make it onto the apron, and they get onto the sidewalk, and they get the parking tickets.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, a couple of questions to both of you, just to follow up on what you just said. That's the first I've heard, that, that we have not been able to enforce parking through the code enforcement people, person, because it's in the vehicle code.
That's correct.
So, is that on your list of items here?
Our finance department is already tackling that. They're already working on that code change, and they'll bring that before you at a later time.
Okay, I'll look forward to that. You mentioned in your presentation on page three, the municipal code was updated in 2012 to create two citation tiers. Do you have any legislative history of why the code was changed in, and what was the intent of the council?
So, before 2012, the, it was only the tier-one fines, the $100 and $200, and the council felt it wasn't effective, and staff felt it was not effective. And so, when you read the staff report at the time, it talks about wanting to, the council of the time wanted to be more effective with their enforcement. Hence, they did two things. They created the tier-two fines, which is 1,000 and 2,000, plus they adopted, they revised their council policy, which says to be aggressive and reduce the, the number of days of the grace period.
So, aggressive is still in the council policy?
It is. Correct.
Okay, and so, the conversation we're having this afternoon is really to maintain that aggressiveness that is currently in our council policy.
And that's the feedback we're looking for.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll give you my feedback on your page 15, increased proactive enforcement for specific violations. What specific file, do we need to specify what we're talking about, or would you come back with the recommendations?
If you have some thoughts on, on more specificity on what you're looking for, I think that, that'd be helpful for us.
About, when was it? About a year and a half ago, where we created, in the municipal code, the noise prohibition on weekends, construction noise? How has that been operating?
I'll, I'll turn to Mr. Murray.
We do have a part-time employee that works the weekends, and one of his main focuses on Saturdays and Sundays is the construction noise. And he's issuing on average between two and three citations every weekend for construction noise. But the, I mean, our first weekends when we were out, we were catching upwards of 30 job sites and violations, so the word has definitely spread, and the enforcement has worked.
Okay. Are these construction companies that are familiar with doing business in Newport Beach?
Sometimes they are, and sometimes you, you have companies that are just coming in to do a quick job that, that didn't take the time to research our, our codes.
Okay. I guess, I think the current code on construction noise and enforcement is, is, seems to be fine. Because you see these complaints, I, I think that what's at the top of my mind is short-term lodging, and that's really where my emphasis is, in terms of stepping up wherever we can enforcement, as long as we're not violating anyone's due process, right? So, wherever we can enhance aggressive enforcement within the law, of course, I'm in favor of that. Also, pre-COVID, we, in the last year's budget, so this year's budget will be significantly less, the TOT from short-term rentals was about over $4 million.
That's correct.
So, obviously, it's less now. As we ramp up, I think we should, my recommendation is that we should be comfortable drawing from those funds to support the enforcement of our municipal code related to short-term rentals, because that's where the revenue is coming from. So, to be determined later because of the shortfall this year, but ultimately, I'd like to see that portion of the general fund pay for enforcement, which surprises me that we don't connect those dots. And change the appeal time for citations, as you mentioned, from 30 down to 17 days?
21 days.
Or 21 days, excuse me. And I would be supportive to increase tier-one fines, because they have not been increased since 2012, in 10 years.
Do you, do you remember? I think it's been even before 2012. It's been a while.
All right, so at least 10 years.
Right.
So, I would be in favor of that. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Brenner?
I also agree that we need to take that appeal period down to 21 if we can. And 48 hours seems absolutely enough for a trash notification, for people to correct that, because it's just, generally, it's people that have just forgotten, and it, and once you remind them, they're going to take care of it, but why give them seven days to do that? On the doc, the DACS and the LUGOs, in our analysis of before we revoke a permit, we have so many citations, and DACS and LUGOs, do they count as one citation, or how do they count into that analysis?
So, if a property gets a DAC or a LUGO, we issue the citation based on that, and then that counts as their, their one violation.
The, the police department gives us a report on what DACS and LUGOs they've issued, and so with that, code enforcement will go ahead and automatically issue a citation.
Okay, and then I had one other question. During our last meeting, there was some mention of the permit fee in San Diego was something like $750 or something. And I'm wondering, did we ever do an analysis of what the permit fees in other cities are? And do we know whether our permit fees are covering our costs?
So, I do believe we have that analysis. We don't have it for you this evening on what the permit fees are. We haven't done the study. It's really going to be depend on if the council's supportive of seven nights of additional enforcement, because we'll add that to the cost, and then we can come back with an updated fee study.
All right, thank you.
Mr. O'Neil?
I had a handful of questions on the short-term lodging enforcement, and I didn't understand something, so I needed to ask first. On the slide 10. So, when it says citations issued 15, does that mean it's 15 since, since October 1st, 2020, or is 15 in response to the hotline?
Since October 1st.
In, in response to the hotline?
Both, yes.
So, the, the 15 citations were generated based off those 88 complaints off the hotline?
Have we issued citations in addition to the 15 that were not generated because of the hotline?
So, we have how many for 2020?
Well, I say, sorry, I saw how many for, for 2020. I was asking, does this represent all of the citations for short-term lodging since October 1st of 2020 to now?
It does?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that, okay, that helps me understand. Can we go to slide, sorry?
Clarify that that, it wasn't working all that time, though, Simone?
The, the hotline has had some gaps, but you know, we, it's the combination of the hotline plus the, what code enforcement receives from just general complaints also. And in addition, you know, recently getting that nighttime enforcement officer out there too. So, it's a combination of everything. So, we, we're definitely ramping up. We think we're at a point now, which we think we're in a, in a good place for that measurement. So, truly, from October 1st, there were gaps in the hotline and in enforcement.
Fair enough. Then, could you go to, I can't, I'm not sure if it's 12 or 14, it's the code enforcement staff and schedule slide?
14.
Yeah, that one. Can I ask, is, while we're looking at this, you know, it strikes me that one of the biggest issues that we, you know, are trying to address is some of the nighttime issues dealing with short-term lodging. So, why are we suggesting a contract in addition to the 3.75, and instead talking about the nighttime person, you know, converting basically that part-time .75 into the nighttime and not having an additional $104,000?
So, we, we only have staffing, from a city staff is 3.75. So, hearing from the council in the past to kind of step up a little bit on the enforcement side. So, we brought in a contract code enforcement officer to help us and assist us. We just don't have that individual on staff right now.
Sorry, what I mean is, do you, you know where I'm going with this, Grace? So I mean, when we're looking at the 3.75, we could keep it at 3.75 if we converted that .75 to a nighttime position instead of a.
You mean like reschedule the hours for that? So Simone, talk to the 3.75, is that, are they're fully engaged, like workload wise? So in order to do nighttime staffing, we need additional resources?
That's correct.
You can't just reallocate from day to night?
Right, so that .75 really helps us a lot on that Friday and Saturday during the day hours. So, um, so you, we, our, our schedules are all stacked, so we can cover all seven days a week. So everybody's busy, everybody has a full caseload. And if we were to reallocate that .75 to the nighttime, it just takes away from the rest of the stuff that they were doing, especially on the weekends too. I think the weekends is really important.
Yeah, I think in the, in the daytime, there's quite a bit, like with the construction activity, looking at those and other types of activity that's really busy during the daytime as well. So it's not just, people are, you know, it's focused on just nighttime, that there's code enforcement issues.
Right. Okay.
So at 6:30 in the morning on Sunday, that's when you'd get people doing construction? Or why would we start then?
So for the Saturdays, absolutely.
Well, Saturdays, I guess.
Yes, Sundays, that's where you're going to find landscaping, because landscaping's not allowed on Sundays. So the landscapers that are coming in on Sundays were getting complaints about that. So that's what he's looking for at that time.
Great, um, that's good. I think a lot of people aren't aware of that. I think one of the issues is that residents aren't quite aware of what's, so like the gas leaf blower thing, I believe a lot of residents aren't sure whether that is not permitted, you know, or not. And, um, then when they see landscapers Sunday morning, the same thing. So I think whatever, and I'm sure there's some outreach going on and just give them the numbers so they can call, because, um, you know, I know in my neighborhood, it's, you know, it's a cacophony of, of blowers and landscapers in the mornings.
Quite a few out there.
Yeah, and, um, so I think whatever outreach we could do, um, because this is, this is great service to residents that are feeling the impacts. And some people don't mind and they don't call, that's good. But for those that are affected and feeling it, uh, that this would be good to make sure they, they're aware of it. Because I think it's probably 50/50 people thinking whether gas leaf blowers are permitted or not. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I wasn't quite done.
Sorry?
I wasn't quite done with my comments.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Could you go to the last slide and, and for me, please? There you go. So, um, it strikes me that, uh, you know, what, what we were looking at that last slide is we have, we've gone to proactive enforcement. We're seeing, you know, we're seeing folks going out to Newport Island in particular at nighttime. I suppose it's, if we have, if we have room in the budget, that's an if, but I'm saying, you know, when you're presenting it to us, um, if, if we have room in the budget, you know, seeing a, a four-night approach going into the summer and testing it out this coming year, okay. Because I, I mean, looking at it over, you know, over a five-month period and issuing 15 citations, you can't really justify 104,000 a year, but I know that we're, that's not the summer months either. So, um, I'd like to probably see this come back at some point, you know, try to data crunch it and see what we've, see what we're doing there. But, um, I mean, the numbers don't quite, they're not quite the, they're not quite showing the story that, um, I think some of the emails we've been getting have, and so I'm trying to reconcile the two. So, uh, it strikes me that, you know, I, I trust our city manager to, to figure it out, because I know the budget's a little, it's going to be a little tighter this year. So if there's room, then going into the summer, if there's not, then we should definitely make sure it, there's a priority for the, for next year on, on something like this. But 15 citations is tough to justify for, you know, for, for this. And even honestly, if we double, if we, if we got to last year's numbers of 66 citations, it's tough to justify $104,000 of, of contract time. But, um, anyway, I, I have no issue with increasing fines or the, or reducing the, the appeal time. And I didn't realize that we needed to put parking issues into the code enforcement or into the codes, but that's fine by me too.
Couple of questions follow up on the hotline, and I know it's been going through its growing pains or startup pains, I suppose. How do we account for, uh, direct emails reporting on issues? People call the hotline or they send you emails? How does that get factored into the total number that gets, uh, code enforced?
So if someone sends us an email direct, then we, we will just open a code enforcement case on, by ourselves for that issue. If they're calling the hotline, the way it works, the hotline's going to call the 24/7 contact for that property. And then at the same time in real time, our on-duty officer is going to get an email from the hotline themselves and she's going to reach out to the contact as well. And then after she speaks with them, she's going to start driving to that property. So she'll be opening a case after that, after that inspection. So when we get an email, we're going to open a case and then follow up. If it comes through the hotline, she's going to make the phone call, drive to the property immediately and then open the case after.
Has any citation been issued as a result of a direct contact through the email to the code enforcement officer?
For short-term lodging? Um, yes, we, and yes and no. We, they emailed me about a parking ticket that was issued. So in that email, it had a photo of the parking ticket. So I was able to open a case and cite off of that. So they did contact PD as well, but off that email, I did issue the citation.
Okay, a couple of technical logistical issues. So I would like you to, you've had now experience of enforcing the new ordinance. Can you tell us what is a challenge to enforce that? Because residents are still complaining, like for example, uh, terms of rental less than four days on Newport Island, you're well aware of that. What are the challenges to enforcing that and also capacity issues?
The challenge is that you have to actually speak with the tenants. So we, we knock on the door and no one answers and we can't confirm with them how long they're staying and we can't get a copy of their lease. So we're unable to issue a citation and we've had times where we've gone back multiple times and no one ever answers and then we're notified that they left and we never got a chance to, to speak with them.
What could we do to strengthen our opportunity to enforce the code that we currently have? We cannot enforce it because if no one answers the door. What can we do differently in terms of the municipal code?
So we do have the auditing abilities, um, and we can request copies of leases at any time. And we have done that for one property recently.
But is there anything else that we need to do? Because the calls to the hotline, how many calls to the hotline?
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight.
Eight, but resulting in only 15 citations. So where's the disconnect? By the time the code enforcement officer gets out there, maybe no one answers the door, but there has been, uh, a call that could have merited a citation, but it can't be proven that, and that a violation has occurred.
So the, um, the purpose of the hotline originally was to notify the emergency contact individual and we think that's finally working well. What we did recently and what we identified as one of the gaps is that it wasn't notifying our code enforcement officer. So that is a recent change that we were able to implement. We had some IT issues, the emails were getting blocked and put into kind of the spam folder. So we were able to resolve that. And so now of recent, probably within the last two weeks, I want to say, is that we actually resolved that issue where not only is the emergency contact individual being notified, but also our, our code enforcement officer is getting real-time information. So that way we can actually start have, to show up at the same, um, property that there's actually receiving a complaint and visually see that. So I think that is going to, a significant change that we've implemented recently.
How do we ensure, well, let me back up. What is the length of time from the call that comes into the hotline to when the code and, a code enforcement officer is dispatched?
She's notified in real time and she begins driving. So it's just as far as she is from that property.
Are we monitor, are we recording, uh, those time actions? So, no?
So we have a timestamp on the email that comes in.
Yes.
And then she will write a report. Uh, if she notices a, a violation occurring, she'll have to document a report, because if that violation is appealed, she'll have to provide that information to the appeal officer.
But if there is noise, okay, so the code enforcement officer, there's a call into the hotline, the hotline's working, that's fantastic. The code enforcement is, officer is dispatched, they go to the property and there's been noise reported as of 10 minutes prior. And now the, the property's been called, so knocking on the door, no one's answering. So a violation has occurred perhaps, but the code enforcement officer is quick as she flies to get there. She can't, she cannot issue a citation, but the resident, the neighborhood, the resident adjacent has experienced at 2 o'clock in the morning, noise impact.
That's true. That's true. There could be a noise impact and it could have woken that neighbor up and by the time the enforcement officer arrives, the noise is gone. And if she doesn't witness.
Like it never happened.
It, it didn't happen, right. And she can't cite on it.
So the data that we're collecting, and we've talked about this a lot.
Right.
I know. We're, it, there are limitations to what we can. So this is really, this data is collected accurately, but it does not reflect accurate experience and impacts in the neighborhood.
That's true. I mean, we, they only can cite on what they visually see, right? They have to see the violation and experience that violation. And if they don't, and if the violation is gone, then the violation is gone.
Is there anything in our code that permits a code enforcement officer to do more than what they're doing? Or should there be something more in the code that permits the code enforcement officer to, to come into the residence? Is that allowed?
No, not, not without permission, unfortunately, no.
No, I know, not without permission.
That's true. Again, if the code enforcement officer is knocking on the door, you know, and the person opens, they can have that conversation and find out what's going on. But as far as adding more language to the code, the officer can't, doesn't have any rights to enter that property. The other thing that we've experienced too is everybody's sensitivity to sound is different. So what could be a violation, uh, could be a disturbance, may not be a technical violation. And we've noticed that, that, you know, we would go out there with a sound meter and measure sound and it, it doesn't trigger on the, on the, on the sound meter. But the neighbor's still disturbed, there is still issues for the neighbor. And at that time, if there's no data to say there's a truly a violation, the officer will just give a warning, because they, they can't cite. There's no, there's no data to support the citation. And, and we find that that occurs quite often too.
Do you know if other cities are reducing their noise levels for 2:00 AM disturbance in a neighborhood?
We're not aware of, of any cities changing that. Not yet, we haven't done the research either, Councilmember Dixon.
So just to reflect for the record, the citations do not reflect the actual disturbances that occur?
That's, that could be possibly true, exactly.
Okay, just want that noted for the record. Going back to the FTE counts, uh, I don't know if you have this in your head, um, you've had, how long have you had the three or two and a half or two and three quarters employees?
When we moved over our supervisor, Matt Cozyline, to the Harbor Department, so that reduced it from 4.75 down to 3.75.
Okay, during that same period of time, we have gone from, in the last five years, how many short-term rental permits to where we are today?
We've doubled. We've doubled the number of short-term lodging permits, um, that we've issued. So that we have definitely a, a lot more. We're, and we're trying to leverage the hotline. We're, we've adapted the new ordinance to, and implemented the new ordinance. So we're, you know, we're a little behind, but I think we're, we're trying to catch up with the, the volume that we have.
Okay, but just to reflect the fact the workload has changed considerably to enforce on 1,550 short-term rental permits in our neighborhoods impacting our neighbors.
And let me qualify my statement, because I, I recall now about five years ago, the last time the council looked at this, they had about 1,100 permits. And now we're approaching 1,500 permits, so we've increased by 400.
Well, the last time the council looked at this was maybe two years ago, right?
This is.
Or 16?
16, correct.
16?
Yes.
So since in five years, we've increased 500. Before that, it was like 500. Well, we're up to 1,500.
Right.
Okay, so bottom line, because you're out in the field, John and his team are out there, have you recommended to the council everything we possibly can do to protect our neighborhoods?
I think we want to continue working with our current ordinance and, you know, we want to go back and, first of all, we have some pending changes with the Coastal Commission. We want to wait and see how those turn out. You know, we're, we're getting some feedback that the Coastal Commission has, is going to want to make some changes. So before we come back to the council to make additional changes to our ordinance, we, we want to get through our Coastal Commission process first, find out what their comments are and then come back to the city council with some, some additional changes. And as far as, you know, with regards to our, just our operational enforcement, we've talked about maybe changing the occupant load to more two people per bedroom. We're look, we've looked at that, so that, I think that's an important topic. Parking keeps coming up as a discussion point, but I think imposing additional parking restrictions are probably not the best way to go, especially for, in the coastal zone. I think that's going to be problematic for us. And then I don't know if Mr. Murray has any additional feedback on some of the operational changes?
Just want to add, I know the hotline went live in October of 2020, but our nighttime officer, she's only been on board since January of this year, so we had to take some time to, to get her up to speed on our, our computer systems and how we operate. So she's relatively new and we're just, like Simone said, we really feel she's up to speed now and you're going to see some, some great improvements in the program.
Okay, one other question, just occurs to me on the emails that I was referring to earlier, is that, do you, do you quantify the number of email communications you receive?
I, we didn't put it in the, in the PowerPoint.
Well, we should. Let's add that to what we're reporting on. I just want to thank you both. I know you've been working and your staff who are not sitting here with you have been working really hard, working with Councilmember Brenner and myself, uh, to work through this in the, in the last couple.
We're sorry.
And we do talk about it, we're, I'm saying this for the benefit of our residents who have waited, been waiting patiently to have the new ordinance fully take effect, have this better enhanced code enforcement. And even now, as we're discussing, trying to fill in the gaps on where enforcement has been made more difficult. So I appreciate what, and you know, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
We just have to keep doing it. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Duffield?
Well, first of all, let me say, I support everything that Ms. Dixon has been talking about and, um, but I do believe, I would like to just express how different a complaint is from a citation. And when you say 88 calls, I know one person who's called 88 times, but, and I'm not going to say that's factual, but honest truth, 88 seems pretty weak to me. I, I have never heard more complaints from a place and I've been there and I've watched it and it's every night, every day, and especially in the summer and before COVID. And to think there's only 88 people, I, that's, I think we have to include emails, you have to, because it's, it's, it's just, um, very disappointing and, and, um, for, especially for the property owner to, to go through this. And what Ms. Dixon was explaining, you know, they come up, you just missed it, too bad. So, um, I just have to sit there and say, please, please, find ways to help these people. Obviously, you know, I'm a boat builder, I, I don't have the, I, the knowledge, but you guys are getting the message pretty clear that, uh, I'm, I'm witnessing property values going down on Newport Island. I, I, I wouldn't live there if, if, if it kept going like this, but it was one of the nicest places you could ever be. And now we're watching it change and we've got to do something. But to think that these complaints, there's just way, way more complaints than I think we're listing. And I think that skews, um, some people up here who are, are trying to think that, oh, it's, there's not many, it's, it's not that big a deal. Because by the time you finally issue a citation, my lord, it's way down the road. And I, I just, but I am on your side, I'm completely for you, I want, I support you. I know the difficulty that you're going through. It's, it's an incredible, uh, problem and I just hope we're smart enough to figure it out. Thanks.
Ms. Brenner?
I was wondering if we received pictures this weekend and online information about a supposed gang that occupied one of the houses on Newport Island that brought their own security guard along and are listed online as problematic for communities? Were there any citations issued for that particular home this weekend?
And I think it's important as we kind of move into some specific instances to, to recognize that it would be inappropriate for the council to direct enforcement on a particular issue. It's okay to inquire about it, but you couldn't direct specific enforcement.
Right, right. I'm wondering if there were any citations issued though, not directing you to do it, but.
So our nighttime officer did get a call about that property. There were some YouTube celebrities that are staying in that home and she responded and there were no violations when she got there. She called the property owner that night, spoke with him, went over everything. I came in Monday morning, I gave him a call myself as well and went over all of our expectations for that property and, and the regulations related to their permit. And he stated he understood, he actually lives very close by, so he's going by that property multiple times a day, because they are there on a, on a 15-day rental.
Oh, okay, so they're there for a while. Okay, and, um, my other question is about on properties that we don't feel that they are up to code or that they are listed accurately on their listing. And we have, I, I believe we have a process in place for rectifying that. Can you tell us what that is?
Are we talking square footage or unpermitted construction?
Unpermitted.
I think bedrooms that are not.
Sure.
And, and do we have a requirement that any bedroom in a short-term rental has the appropriate escape mechanism that we have, that are we require in our code for bedrooms?
Yes. So we, we did have a property with that complaint. So we, we did have a property with that complaint, we do have inspection rights to these short-term rental properties, so we issued the letter, they granted us access, we conducted the inspection. And what we do, our standard procedure when we do find any violations, is to create a correction letter, give it to the property owner and the property manager. We did that in this case, and they've been working with our permit counter to, to get a permit and gain compliance.
Okay, and how long does that process take? Is it...
It, it all depends on the scope of the work, so in this case, I believe they're going to need to hire an architect, so they're going to need a little bit more time than if someone who could just fill out a standard city set of plans and, and submit those over the counter.
But they're allowed to continue renting that property out during this period of time?
Correct.
So, so our code doesn't tie a building, building code violation to the short-term rental? So, you know, they're two separate cases, the short-term rental permit is separate and, and distinct from the building code violation. So in this particular case, the, when you, Councilmember Brenner, when you asked about the emergency egress windows, that's something that is important, that they need to have. So, and I've seen the photo for this particular property, and it had the appropriate window size, but there were some other walls that were moved around that they didn't get permits for, so that's what they'll be working on to get those permitted.
Should that be tied to our ordinance?
That's definitely something to add to the, the ordinance, that's definitely if, if the council believes so, we can definitely include that for a future change.
From a safety standpoint and a liability standpoint, it seems like being able to exit a bedroom if there's a fire or something is a critically important component.
Right, so we have that authority already to, what we call red tag a unit, if we feel, felt it was unsafe. The inspectors went in, they didn't feel there was any life safety issues, but there were some walls moved that had to get permitted. But that, that building code violation could be definitely tied to a short-term lodging permit.
And I do think, though, with some of the modifications we made to the code, that some of those violations are a potential for looking at it in regards to the short-term lodging permit that was added by the council. So it's something we can work, work through.
I think that would be helpful. And I, I just wanted to state that I think that we're going to have a much more accurate analysis after we've gone through the summer and with the end of COVID, and, and getting our answering service up and operational, and having our process really worked out, that probably by fall, we will have a much more accurate view of, of what the real situation is. I just had one other question. Now, talking about the 6:30 AM code officer, is there any way that our code officers can enforce dogs off-leash on the beach? Does that have to be an animal control officer down there? Because that's the time in the morning that we are having a lot of complaints about unleashed dogs on the beaches.
Currently, it's handled by animal control, I'd have to look into it if we have the authority to do that.
Interesting to find out, because it doesn't seem like we're getting adequate coverage for that issue, we're getting a lot of complaints from people about unleashed dogs on the beaches. Thank you.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you. I want to start by saying thank you, guys. It's, when I look at the number of things you deal with, and we're talking about just shy of 4,000 cases, and then we spend about 90% of the time up here talking about, what are we at, 195 cases? It shows that maybe there's an askew for how we're dealing with things, because you guys need a lot of those man-hours to make this happen. And I think that's really our apparent, that you've been working really hard to get all of these things lined up, and the short-term lodging is really becoming the focus of irritation. And I think, you know, in two parts, one, it's probably the newest thing to double in Newport in a long time, or at least go up by about 500, as Simone stated. And as the tides have shifted and hotels have become a little less operable over this last year, we've seen a lot of people turning to those for vacations. But when I look at the citations, and I know there's been questions about those, the numbers work pretty closely. I mean, when you, when you talk about 1,000 citations issued against the 4,000 cases you guys have opened, and we talk about 66 against the 195, I mean, you guys are actually giving more citations for short-term lodging than anything else in the city, which I think is just a good metric for us to look at. And important to realize that sometimes, yeah, we get there late and they've quieted down, but that kind is the goal, you know? If, if we arrive and there's no noise, yes, it was an irritation, yeah, no one wants that, no one wants to be woken up, but that's great that there's a system in place that's working, whether it's the hotline and someone calling that 24/7 number, and by the time we get enforcement there, it doesn't require more man-hours and more dollars and cents from the city for us to keep operating and sending them through appeal processes and, and the like. And so sometimes I think it's hard for us to realize up here, because we hear the complaint side, how much you guys are doing to try to, to curb this. And so I, I know Joy always says I'm very positive, and so I, I do remain positive in all of these things, and I think, you know, the trend, if I was to, you know, forecast this for, for more of a business thing, I would say that we're trending well. You know, there are definitely areas of concern, and I think Diane and Joy are 100% on point with that, Duffy as well, that, you know, Newport Island is a point of major concern when we see that many concentrated complaints, and that's something of focus. But also, if we can take a step back from, from the complaints and look at the trends, I think we can benefit each other much, in a much more productive way. And I, I think the asking of a .75 person, which cracks me up, is an amazing feat, if you can operate that with the percentage of, that you're looking at currently. So, you know, I just want to say, great job, I think we've been doing amazing work out there, and it has been nice that even as we're increasing, because if we look at the 19 to 2020 numbers, adding 500 more short-term lodging options and not seeing those complaints go up, but seeing them go down, well, that shows a benefit, and that shows something that's working, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, just one closing comment, we have been operating in a pandemic, so these numbers should be looked at through the lens that this is low-level activity compared to maximum-level visitors to our community that we know we'll be experiencing, as Ms. Brenner said, going through the summer months. We know that this is short-term rental light. One comment, just to follow up on Ms. Brenner's comment and yours, Mr. George, is about the building codes. One of the reasons you recommended that we tie in occupancy capacity to building and safety code was that that was an understood metric. But it's, but if we're going to do that, let's fully integrate our building and safety code to enforcing short-term rentals. So if a short-term rental has modified their home to accommodate a greater capacity than what was permitted, I don't know why we can, I think there should be an abeyance or hiatus for that short-term rental permit until they are brought into compliance, and then they can be reissued a permit. So do we have to, what do we need to do to tie that more closely together?
And just real quick, I just want to jump in here, because we did on the suspensions and the revocations and the enforcement piece, tie in all the violations of the code and state law, and, and, so those are kind of, we did grab those and put them into the short-term lodging, or, so I just want to make sure that we're clear on that point.
All right, but, okay, I'll look at you, but, so if, if, if a short-term rental property, home, is been rebuilt without the permit, but they're renting the home, why are we allowing that rental to continue?
Well, I think in general, we can't talk about specific instances, because the council doesn't want to direct on specific instances of enforcement. But that's something I could talk to Mr. George about, and see whether or not a red tag should be issued or not. They, they went through this particular property, and they didn't think a red tag should be issued, that it wasn't a safety issue. If they felt it was a safety issue, then that's something they would have done, is basically stopped, stopped them from, from operating. But the, the mechanisms are already there in the code.
But those changes, I, I don't know which property that was, but one of those properties who was found, they added additional bedrooms, and it was not permitted, and so they were able to increase capacity of their occupancy without the perm, I mean, without, because if they were two bedrooms, they had X number of four people plus two others as their capacity, but because they added two other bedrooms in the dining room and the closet, then they created two bedrooms, fictional bedrooms, and then therefore they were able to increase their capacity. Why would we allow that rental to exist under their permit?
I'm sorry, but just going to respond just real briefly, I mean, the occupancy is based on, isn't based on the number of bedrooms, it's based on...
No, it's on building, right, but if they're violating the building code, why would we allow that to continue?
I'm just saying that occupancy is based on the overall square footage, it isn't based on the number of bedrooms.
No, I understand.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on that point.
However, but they were, they are operating in such a way that they are exceeding capacity for the allowed, the permitted number of bedrooms.
So that's an issue they could take a look at as far as enforcement goes? I think that there's, it's a really tough area for the council, as far as, like, kind of specific enforcement instances. They have to have discretion about how they want to enforce, and I, I'm just letting you know that some of the tools are there for them to use already, because you, you guys are mainly looking at the tools, but not looking at how they specifically decide how to enforce in a particular instance.
Well, that's fine, so we could make, that's, you're correct, I, our job is to find, identify and, or specify the right kind of policy tools. All right, but anyway, we'll come back on the capacity issue.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
This is my last question, I'm sorry, but what constitutes a bedroom in our building code? I mean, does it have to have a closet, and it has to have a window so that you can escape?
It's not, it's, it's more about how you use it, so if you want to sleep in a specific room, you need to have that large-size window to escape, and that's pretty much all it is. If you want to, you're not prevented from sleeping in your living room, you could escape through the front door. You can't sleep in your bathroom, because typically you don't, bathrooms don't have those large egress windows, so it's really the use of that room, and that's pretty much it, there's no requirement for a closet in, in a bedroom. And so if, if they convert, and the, one of the issues that we've heard is that they've converted a closet into a bedroom. And so of recent inspection, we've, that is probably what's happened, but they've also installed the proper-sized window, so there's no life safety, they have a smoke detector, so there's no life safety, but they moved some walls around, so that's something that they'll have to get a permit for.
Okay, thank you.
I think all great comments, and to Mr. Blom's comment, yeah, I think it's incredible that we're able to do code enforcement, and we're starting this program with the number of units we have out there, 1,550 operating, and this summer is going to be a real test, and we're going to learn a lot of things, I think, as, hopefully, you know, as COVID drops and people resume quasi-normal life, we're, we're going to learn a lot, and I think you're going to get a lot of calls, frankly, and it's going to step up. But, you know, the thing I always come back to is, you know, when, Newport Beach is such an attractive city for visitors, and we want visitors to visit, and we, and over generations, this incredible town has developed in this location that's like no other. And someone comes into town and opens a business, and why do they come here? Because it's, it's a great town for business, because the right kind of people come, and they're, you know, all kinds of folks come, but they're good for business. And so, you know, when someone opens up a short-term rental and they don't manage it, and it impacts the neighborhood, it's hurting those other businesses, because eventually people are going to say, you know, I can't live here anymore, and conversely, they're going to say, well, you know, the city's coming down on people, if you're going to have a short-term rental, you've really got to manage it. So this is, this is something where we really need to focus, I think, obviously, on, on property owners and people who are running businesses, and just say, you know, you've just got to be a good partner in this, and you've got to manage your property. I mean, I've had rentals for a long time in different places, and I, you know, and I remember one time, there's a woman came down here at a council meeting and talked about short-term rentals, and she had them out of town somewhere, and she was so clear about, I never have a problem, because I manage my properties, and I give, let my expectations known to these tenants. And she met them all, right, just come in, she'd go down, just look them in the eye, because what happened to her neighbors was important to her, that her neighbors weren't impacted by her short-term rentals, because she knew it wasn't going to be good for her as well. But also for her, it was just sort of almost a moral thing, she just liked. So, you know, we, we need to get to that relationship with people, they need, I think sometimes people take Newport Beach for granted, they come in, they set up a short-term rental, and they're, they don't live in town, and, and they're just not managing it. And so I don't know how we do that, but over time, we need to, and I know from a code perspective, you've got what I call the proud nails, they're the repeat offenders, they're the hot properties, I'm sure all the code enforcement folks know them, and we need to get the message clear that we, we've got to help these people in Newport Island, we've got to help anybody. I think you just have to think for a second, how would it be if somebody set up a short-term rental right next door to you, where you live, anybody in this room? Nobody would want it. I'm sure it's the worst news a homeowner can have, to think, all of a sudden, for years they've had neighbors, and now they've got a business next door running short-term rentals. And hopefully, their, their fear is unwarranted. I think most of the time it will be, right, when someone's managing it, it's, it's not a problem. But it's, it's something that I believe we're on the road toward helping these folks out that are impacted by this, and hopefully toward educating these folks that are running these businesses, and doing very well, some of them are really throwing off a lot of cash, and that's great, it's good for them. But with that comes responsibility to take care of their neighbors, and try to do it in a way that's not going to adversely impact them to the point where they, they're so upset, they have to find the number, they have to call, and they're, by that time, they are so worked up, you know? And, I mean, it's not uncommon to have these people shouting across fences and out windows at each other, you know, just imagine, you're in your own home and you're engaged in some altercation in the street, which we've heard repeatedly from people on Newport Island, and it's, it's, so it's, it's really tough. So, you know, I applaud this effort, I think we're, we're going on the right track, but this dialogue, and I think, I might, I'd like to get to the point where, do you feel you have enough to go on here, do we need to be more explicit about what we're after?
No, we have everything, thank you.
Actually, I'm sorry, for purposes of the Brown Act, it'd probably be good to kind of straw poll, to see what you're supportive of. What, what I heard was, everybody kind of in support of three and four, does that sound right, the increased fines and changing the appeal timeline, does that sound right?
Anything else, Aaron?
I guess we can take them one by one.
Yes, let's do that.
So, yeah, we still need public comment, do you want to do this before public comment or after public comment?
Public, after?
You do it after.
Okay, yeah, we get some more information here, so let's go out to the public. Have anyone here now, anybody in the other room that wants to speak? Here comes Denise.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, Denise Oberman. I want to thank the council for bringing forward this issue of code enforcement. I have several comments about this, conceptually. One is, from the user's perspective, it is not clear what the roles are of the various enforcement groups in the process of enforcement. So we've got code enforcement, we have the PD, we have parks and senior services, which, from my experience, is more clear than the other two agencies as to their roles and responsibilities. So from the, from the user's standpoint, it's difficult to even know who to call if, if there's a desire or a need to issue, and really more of a need, to issue a complaint. Who's the complaint to go to and for what purpose? So I, I feel, I feel strongly that that needs to be looked at and clarified, whether the council directs the city manager to do it, or the council has some policy mandates, it is not clear. So correspondingly, these enforcement groups appear not to have any consistent direction or standards as to what they do in the way of enforcement. One example is with the PD, the DAX issued, and it was brought up, you know, when should the police officer issue a warning, at what point does that warning progress to a DAC or a LUGO? And I don't see at all in this mix, where do citations come into this process by way of an enforcement mechanism that people can learn from and listen to and appreciate? So, the other thing relative to citations, and I know I've got a time limit, but there is a direction about citations and short-term lodging. And I noticed that for noise violations and other violations, there is a higher level of citation than there is in the other similar types of nuisances in non-STL. And I guess I would ask the question, why, why are those fines not harmonized? Why, if there's somebody that's doing business in this city that is repeatedly creating a nuisance or creating a nuisance, whether it's a construction person or somebody that's tried to operate a live entertainment... tried to operate a live entertainment that's non-short-term lodging, why shouldn't they be subjected to the same level enforcement, including the citation amounts? You know, why should it be $100 in the case of a contractor and $1,000 in the case of the short-term lodging person? I think it should be harmonized, and my argument would be that all the fines should be increased so they harmonize for a similar type of violation. So my last comment, can I finish my last comment? It'll just be a couple of seconds. As to the complaints versus citations issued, there is no doubt that the citations issued, the numbers in this report respectfully, but they don't even show a fraction of what the complaint level is. And believe me, is, the last thing that anybody that's living in Newport Beach wants to do is to have to call in a complaint. It's not fun, it's disturbing the peaceful enjoyment of our homes, and we'd really appreciate the problem being honestly and diligently addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yeah, I see none. Do we have any calls? Four calls. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead. Please go ahead. Yeah, we're working on a 30-second delay here, so please go to the next. Hello, please go ahead, mute your device.
Hello. This is Bud Breanley. Listening to your conversations tonight, and I'm happy that this kind of meeting is taking place, but what I seem to realize is there's so many things that are still confusing in terms of what the officers can do or code enforcement officers can do, I suppose legally. Actually, and I really agree with Diane, this talk about a person who built a home and then modified it and was caught, and why wasn't their permit suspended immediately? If people are going to get away with this, and you let them get away with it, it's going to continue and get out of control. And then you ask, you pass the law about having three-day stays and four-day stays, and then I find out that community development, they can't even ask the persons who are running these units up for their leases. That's ridiculous. If you put it in the permit, and they have to give you the number of leases and photocopy it or send it to you by some kind of email. And then the other thing is parking. Now you're saying, "We haven't changed and adjusted our parking ordinances for the city, and we can't even do, can't even have code enforcement do anything about parking." And then motorized vehicles. This is a ridiculous thing on the, on the boardwalk. You've got these signs, they've had them there for years, no motorized vehicles. Now I find out from a meeting you just previously had, that's, electric vehicle is not a motorized vehicle in your view. So what are you going to do? Just let them come? Every year, it's getting more and more dense. You have to have a solution to this. You've looked at it for years, batted around, somebody out for all these interviews, and nothing came back, except the guy said, "The only way you can solve the problem is divide the two lanes, a motorized lane and a walking lane." And you haven't done anything about that. You don't even, that didn't even come up in your conversation. I don't know. And then you passed a law that said, you know, if you get a ticket on a car, it's a violation, it's also a violation to the STR. Now, how would you ever administer that? It's just a law that's completely irrelevant. And then you go out, you say, "Three people call about sound, and they're being bothered by it, and you can't come out and measure any sound, or you can't, you can't get any entrance to the property. If they don't answer the door, you can't get any information." It keeps going on and on. I can't, I can't see any end to this. Now, everything you put in front of the council, the county commission, you're, you're a late, they say you're going to wait a year to get answered. I think there's something funny going on here between
All right. Thank you, Bud.
... development and accountant's commission. That should have never come, that letter should have never come.
All right, thank you very much.
If it did come, I was on your council, I'd make sure, no reason.
All right, thank you, Bud.
I'm sorry, folks. I see people on that council house, and no idea what we're going.
All right, thank you very much. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Avery and members of the council. This is Nancy Scarborough. Have a question and a comment. The comment is that Newport Beach has a phone app that is pretty simple to understand and easy to use, very intuitive, allows you to pay your bill online for your water. You can also place a service request, which will allow you to report a damaged street sign, light repair, or a code violation. You can point on a map to the address, it gives you the address. You can take a picture, write a comment, and submit that with a click. You can also be anonymous when you do that. You don't have to, you know, give your name or phone number or anything. So maybe that's something that could be given some public awareness, so that people know that that's there, you wouldn't have to look up a phone number, as per Mayor Avery's comment about where do you get the phone number to call. The question is, when you use this app, how does it get routed and how long does it take? So if you're using this for an STL for noise, is it routed immediately, or is this going into some kind of a database that gets reported the next day? That's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Carmen Rossum, and I would like to make a comment regarding the data that has been provided of complaints versus citations, and it would be useful to have information about in what specific areas are the complaints and the citations. The issue is, you have 1,550 short-term rental permits. Well, are these complaints and these citations for 200 of those permits, or is more broad? Also regarding the evaluation of having code enforcement, the available seven nights versus four nights, it would be useful maybe to look at what specific nights do you get the complaints? Do you get most of the complaints on Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, or are they throughout the week? So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. One more call. Two more. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Scott McFetter, Newport Island. Hello, Mayor Avery and council. I appreciate you, all that you're doing on this short-term rental situation, on this, with code enforcement. I just want to bring a few things up today. I think council did a really good job today of going over a lot of the issues, but I think one thing that gets distorted all the time is the amount of phone calls that go to the police department, the amount of phone calls that go to code enforcement, the amount of emails that go to code enforcement. They do not correlate to those statistics at all on those slides. There's, there's just no way. And even if you go to the police report and it shows who's called in, like, there was two different calls for noise this week on Newport Island, it only shows one, one, one event. It doesn't show that maybe six people called for that event. So to rely on the statistics, whether it's Newport Island, or how many people call on the boardwalk regarding motorized vehicles and accidents, it's just not right, because it's not reflective of really what's going on. So anyway, so I wanted to, I wanted to mention that, and I also think it might be good to look at having the operators held accountable, just like the owners, like some other cities are doing, so that the bad operators get so many strikes before they're out too. Because the ones that we seem to have the biggest problems with are the ones that aren't from here, the ones that the Avon stays or even Seabreezes that aren't people that live here, or, you know, they do business here, but they are coming into areas where they, there wasn't short-term rentals before, and other people aren't putting them there because of that, because they're not good places to put them, but since they need to spend their money and get their investors a return, they're putting them in places like Newport Island that don't make sense. And unfortunately, a lot of these things that are happening are just coming in now, where we've got this person working the night for code enforcement, we've got other things going. But a lot of people have got away for a lot of things, including people that had added extra bedrooms, or I'm not sure on the square footage either, and they were able to operate at a higher occupancy and not get any trouble for it. So that should definitely be a suspension of their license, and I think the city manager, looking at it, has that ability to do something about that. So anyway, thank you very much. Let's keep up the hard work and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead. Hello, please go ahead. Okay, we're done. Great, do we have any more comments from council members?
Just to clarify on the items that the city attorney was going through.
Yes.
Mr. Juergis was talking about the, maybe Ms. Brenner said that, about 48 hours instead of a week in terms of getting, on the tier-one violations, bringing in the trash cans, that type of thing. I'd like to add that.
So that wouldn't be appropriate to direct them to basically do a 48 hour? They needed the discretion to issue what they think's appropriate? I tend to agree with you, though, that I think there are instances where 48 hours would be appropriate, other times seven days. They need to be consistent with how they're enforcing it, but the discretion needs to be left with, with the enforcement officer about how, how much time they give to somebody to correct.
Okay, it's a very important point, because I don't think anybody knew that there was discretion. So how can the council convey that recommendation?
So I think that you conveyed that you're looking for, you know, them to be aggressive with, with the enforcement that's in the policy already. I think there are times where 48 hours is perfectly appropriate, because it can be fixed in 48 hours. Other times where seven days is appropriate. But the discretion, as far as how they approach it, they could, they could basically issue citations, you know, immediately if they felt it was warranted, and they do in some instances, depending on what the violations are. But I think overall, so you don't get allegations that you're, you know, you're citing people for some suspect reason, they need to be consistent in how they're doing that. So I think it's good, good input to staff that maybe they should look at how much time they're giving people to fix different violations, but it wouldn't be appropriate to direct them to do one thing.
All right, I accept that, but staff was looking to the council for direction in terms of the, how to define aggressive. And so aggressive, the council may be saying, I certainly am, 48 hours on some of these tier-one items, but to use their discretion in a fair and, in a fair and equitable way.
That's, that's perfect.
Mr. O'Neil.
So as we're going through on these items, I don't understand what number one is then, I mean, which, we've already got the nighttime staffing, we've already, we're already going out to Newport Island specifically. What, what other specific violations would we be doing proactive enforcement on? This would, this question was for any code violation within the city, so not just related to short-term lodging, if there was anything you were hearing from, from your residents in general. Yeah, we're not in HOA. If people want to live in an HOA, they, there are plenty of those, so I, no, I'm not, I'm not going to support that. All right, thanks.
Okay, no more council comments?
What do we just, are we all in agreement, or what are we?
So if I could just recap real quick, so, and I'm probably going to work from the bottom up. So for number four, increasing the tier-one fines, it seemed like everyone was supportive of that, if we could get hands maybe raised. So we have everyone except for Captain Blom. And then change the appeal time for citations from 30 days to, down to 21 days? Is everyone supportive of that? Everyone, okay, so same on that. Then finally, nighttime staffing, I kind of, what I was hearing was potentially four nights for this, you know, for the summer, if it works out from a budgeting standpoint? Is that, is everybody in support of, of that?
I abstain and defer to the city manager on budgeting.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I abstain and defer to the city manager on budgeting.
But everyone else was, was supportive of something in that, of that nature? If the budget allows for us, maybe four nights for the summer as a trial, but up to the city manager's discretion? Okay, all right.
And then number one?
I, I think, so that's a question of, you know, do you want to be proactive across the board? So as far as code enforcement going out and basically actively looking for violations, that would require a significant amount of new staffing for that item. So I think the staffing kind of plays into that, because, you know, we're reactive right now primarily. You know, if they happen to notice something that looks like needs to be addressed, they'll address it. But if you wanted to have a proactive program, that would require a significant amount of staffing. May I turn it over to the city manager for that piece?
Well, yeah, and I would just say, I don't think, I don't think just a blanket, "We want more proactive enforcement," is going to assist us, because it does require additional resources. So it would be looking at specific areas that, you know, an increased level of enforcement is, is to be considered, and we'd have to factor that in from a resource perspective.
Well, I'm, certainly, my opinion is to give the city manager that determination. You're now collecting, we're collecting a lot more data on these, on these code infractions, and if you need additional resources, I would expect you to come to the council and say, "We need more help," or, "Do you want us to be more proactive on A, B, and C-type infractions or violations?" If you're looking for that kind of guidance. I would like to keep it, I certainly want to keep what we're doing, in my opinion, keep it reactive, and then when they see, driving around, they see trash cans in the streets, they're going to proactively code enforce. So that's my definition of proactive. But if we need to do more than that, then I would see that it would come back to the council for, for us to give you advice and counsel.
Sure, yeah, but I will say on the trash, that that is a reactive. We don't specifically have code enforcement just going out to look for the trash.
No, but John said if he's driving around and they see
If they happen to see, yeah, of course.
And you said that's proactive.
Well, that was on the, the gas blowers.
Correct, it's more the gas leaf blowers and health and safety issues. So if we have a dumpster parked around a corner, that's a traffic accident waiting to happen.
All right, okay, I accept that. Let me just make clear my definition of proactive. Boardwalk, we didn't really talk that much today about boardwalk, we've talked a lot about it in the past. I don't think we should wait for someone to call and report that there is, we've got the ambassadors on the boardwalk, that there's speeding on the boardwalk, or there's such-and-such violation. We've got the ambassadors, so we're doing proactive enforcement, well, not proactive education on the boardwalk.
I would say proactive education and engagement, you know? And having that presence out there that we are doing right now.
Right, okay, we'll continue that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
What about the 48 hours notices? Did we say that? That's within your discretion? Okay, within staff's discretion.
All right. So our next item is the capital improvement program. We're running a little late here.
It's not working.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Excited to be here again. This is the next phase in the development of our capital improvement program. As you remember, we start usually in December, and our planning session, we had some discussion on it. Tonight, we're going to be showing you what we call our early look. This is basically what new money we're looking to put in, new projects into the budget. Remember, for those at home and aren't familiar, the capital improvement program is a fluid document, and it transcends over years. So we have a lot of projects in progress, they're going to be rebudgeted and moved forward, but we also have a lot of new things we want to put in and talk about tonight. So tonight, I'm actually going to, after doing 12 episodes of this over my years here, I'm going to turn it over tonight to Jim Houlihan, who's our city engineer, deputy director, to go through the presentation and take questions. Just on that note, before we go, I want to make a reference to Angela Crespe over here. She's our finance and administrative manager, and you probably know that she's leaving us this week. She does a yeoman's effort to put this to, with Jim and her together, and there's a lot of hours that come into this program. And actually, she promised me and left it today. I saw the draft TIP that's done now, provided your comments tonight. There's a lot of work to go into that. that's done now, provided your comments tonight. There's a lot of work to go into that, and left us in a good spot. So thank you for all your time and work on that. But, and I know we're tight, so Jim's going to do a quick abbreviation. We'll take questions as they go, and I'm available for questions also.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, council members. All right, we'll run right into it here. So the goals, uh, every year, same. We're looking to budget resources to maintain our existing infrastructure and keep it in good working conditions. We're assuming, as we have in the past years, a $5 million in general fund investment toward the infrastructure, maintenance, or repair. And we continue to prioritize investment in the Newport Harbor parks, park and replacement and rehabilitation of public buildings. How we select our projects, we go through all of our master plans every year. Um, we've updated them some recently, others are coming soon. Uh, the sewer master plan is one that's coming soon, but most of them are updated yearly. Um, we also identify the, and requests by community and council and department staff. Uh, we do that through the beginning, or the, this, the first half of the fiscal year, we're going through that effort. And, and then we get that all bundled together at this time of the year, every year. And then also, um, that those items that support city council goals and objectives are included in here, and anything required by federal, state, or legal action. So real quick, some of the significant projects that we've completed this fiscal year, um, these nine right here are, they total approximately $14.9 million. We've completed, uh, close to $17 million worth of projects. Um, there's about 17 total projects that we've completed so far. And again, these are nine of the large ones that we've completed. Significant projects that are under construction right now, um, about $28 and a half million on that. And these are 10 of the large projects that are ongoing right now. So for this coming year, uh, we're proposing, uh, a CIP budget of $69.8 million. 30.6 of that is new funding, and that's what we'll primarily be going through is projects that have new funding, not all the projects that are rebudgeted and such. But some of these projects that have new funding also have rebudget money. So we'll see that as we go through. $39.2 million is re, being rebudgeted at this time. By the time we get to, uh, June and July, that number should be lower. Um, and again, nine of the large rebudgeting, uh, projects are listed below, and those also have, uh, the status of those projects. So this is a, a slide you've seen in the past. Um, at the end of last year, when we're putting together the budget, we put together our deferral, um, to come up with approximately $20 million of deferred work. Um, this, uh, slide tonight is showing, um, in the middle column there, that, so the first column is that $20 million. The middle column, you have three, or four Xs in there. Those four Xs, we have found, uh, budget to move forward with those. Um, and we have budgeted within our CIP. Um, a couple, well, as we go through, you'll see them as aster, I've put an asterisk next to them, so you can see how they are identified in the, the new funding portion of the, of the, the budget. Um, the last X item is an item that won't fall into the CIP. It's a project that we're looking for, we're, we're working with, uh, operation funds. And that's working on the glass along West Coast Highway to fix, uh, to upgrade that glass along that edge. So that'll be coming out of the operation funds. The other items listed there, there's five projects listed there in the middle there. And at the end of the, uh, presentation, we'll be talking about those specifically. Those you will not find in the, the new funding presentation, but those are ones that are unfunded and will be looking, um, suggesting to program those to move forward. So that's what, what this is showing. I'll move forward here. So what we're showing here, um, are the new projects with, uh, proposed new funding. And, um, we'll start with facilities. The, uh, two of the items here, you see the junior lifeguard billing in the library lecture hall. Those, we're in the, uh, concept stage. We're hoping to get approval to move forward to final design. I know we've got a MOU on both of those. Junior lifeguard billing will come forward tonight later. That money that I have set there is for the, um, any additional design or permitting that is necessary. So that's just, those two are, um, small amounts for those two projects. The other ones, um, the other significant projects, uh, the city yard fueling and the transfer station upgrade, um, those two are in, are, will begin design next year, and that'll be one of our more significant projects moving forward, uh, for construction in the future years. Uh, as I go through this, if there's anything on these individual pages that you would like to stop and talk about specifically, you can.
Great.
Yep, go ahead.
So Jim, just let me go ahead and just ask the council if they have any, um, conflicts on any of these projects?
Yeah, and I think the way we'll handle it is probably have the council announce all their conflicts, and then if there's a specific discussion regarding a matter where you have a conflict, then you can just step out of the room for that, for that item. That sounds good with you, Mary Avery?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Okay, so go down the list here.
That, that's probably best, or.
Yeah, okay, here we go. So Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a conflict with the oceanfront boardwalk parking lot improvement projects due to real property interests.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner?
Erin, I don't think I have any. Grant Halle Park is over, right?
Correct.
Councilmember O'Neil?
None.
Councilmember Dixon?
Uh, where is the Lido median? I don't see it. Where is it? Is it on here?
So there's a, oh, go ahead. Excuse me. So there's a, uh, landscape enhancement program that, where a portion of the Lido Isle median.
Okay, so that would be, I would be, have a conflict there.
And that's just because you're a member of the association, and there could be a possible financial impact.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Blom?
Yeah, I have a conflict with the utilities undergrounding assessment district number 111, based on real property. I have a conflict with the Balboa Island drainage improvements, based on real property. I have a conflict with the landscape enhancement program on Lido Park, based on real property, and I have a conflict with the Marine Avenue rehabilitation, based on real property.
Mayor, um, and I don't have any. Thank you. All right.
All right. So I'll continue to run through these pretty quick. Um, so on our street and drainage, um, some of these projects, uh, a couple of them are rebudgeted. The large one at the bottom, East Coast Highway pavement rehab, uh, will be coming forth for construction this summer, late this summer. Um, Jamberry Road Rehab will be going to construction early next year, '22. So we're starting design shortly. And the completion of the streets and drainage, um, these projects here, we're following up the, uh, via Lido Nord and South with the, the water project, with the pavement project, which will be occurring after the, we complete that water project. So the total on the streets and drainage, about 10.2 million of new money. Are there any questions on the streets and drainage portion?
None so far.
Okay. Moving to transportation, um, the Balboa Peninsula Summer Trolley, that will be coming forth to you at next meeting to discuss, uh, potential deferment for another year. Um, we are looking for, to move some funding into that project for the next, if we defer it this year, for the next four years after that, which would extend it to 2025. There's four more years on that program. And the, the traffic calming project, that too, may be coming before the end of the fiscal year for award of the contract and, um, allocating funding for that as well.
Sorry to interrupt, Jim. I just want to make that, sure that's clear. There are two projects that'll be coming before you next time, but they're in the CIP right now. The Balboa Summer Trolley is one of those. We're going to allocate the funds for the match. There's two OCTA grants that run that. But we're going to be asking you, we think it's proper to delay it one more year, and that item's going to come to you. And that's a council discussion. We want to talk about that tonight if you'd like. We're just feeling that with COVID just coming out in May, we probably will not see the ridership, and people may not want to get on the bus. OCTA's already told us they'll give us another year, so we still have four years left. So our recommendation that your next meeting will bring a resolution to delay that and a couple other projects. But it is in the budget tonight, and we're willing to talk about that if you have any questions on that.
Great.
All right. Moving into the water quality environmental, um, these, the Water Wheel is going through permitting right now. Um, this is a new grant that we received. And the San Antonio Delhi Channel, that is a, uh, a completion, the project's been completed, but this is our final, um, participation, uh, fee, or portion of our funding. Um, that's, uh, being requested by the, by the state, by San Ana and the county. And, uh, parks, harbor, beaches, the, uh, park projects here listed. The bottom three are new projects, the Newport Coast Pickle Ball Courts, and the Dog Park and 38th Street fencing. And the harbors and beaches, um, the large one there is the funding, additional funding for the dredging and, and the planning. We're in the permitting stage right now still, and, um, working through that. And, uh, the final slide on the harbors and beaches, um, the, we're going to be doing another assessment on the seawalls for Balboa Island. It's been about 11 years since we've done that. So we need to see where that stands. So total for parks, harbors, and beaches for new funds is approximately $9.5 million. Any?
Yes, good question.
Yeah, any questions?
Ms. Dixon?
My screen's still not working. But anyway, Newport Pier Building Platform, when are we going to be demolishing the old restaurant? Is that in, is that in the budget? Are we deferring that?
No, that's in the budget. Um, we're, right now, we're in, uh, permitting, um, and design. We're looking at early next year to start, which would start with the demo.
So we do have this proposed to be in the budget?
That's right.
Okay.
These are all proposed to be in the budget.
Okay.
And you can see there's a rebudget as well, so we have the funding to move forward.
Are we waiting for Coastal? Is that where that is?
Right now, no.
No?
We will be going to permitting. We will have to do that.
Didn't we file that with Coastal? I thought we did.
Real quick, the, the building was put in, and we have a demolition permit on the building, but there's pure work that has to be done, as Jim alluded to. There's a rebudget there, and there's a lot of piles that have to be replaced. That's going through Coastal now. Once we get those permits, I believe, then we'll go ahead and start trying to get it out to bid. Um, I don't know where the lease of the new building is, but we are working forward to removing the building.
Okay. So in the water, uh, projects here, the large project on the top, the 16th Street Pump Station, um, that is, uh, getting close to, going to award for construction. Um, you'll be seeing that, uh, before the end of the fiscal year. And additional funding for the advanced metering, this is the last installment for that, uh, project. And wastewater, these are, these are two of our yearly programs that we fund. So not any major projects with sewer this coming year. And in, uh, in our miscellaneous category, uh, the Peninsula Encroachment Removal Program, we'll be working with the, uh, Community Development Department on this. And, um, we're proposing to use the, uh, Oceanfront Encroachment Fund for the removal of those encroachments. And, um, we'll be start, looking to start this in early 2022. Any questions on those?
All the money in the, the oceanfront encroachment, that's, there's plenty of money in there, or enough money to do the removal?
There is. Yeah, this is just a portion of it.
Oh, just a portion. So the rest has to come, did I understand?
No, no. That's just a portion of the funds that are available. There's plenty of money in there to, to do this work.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. All right, good.
Good news. Okay. So this is a, a breakdown of the, the, uh, the funding by type, uh, proposed new funding, and that's where we get the $30.6 million of new funding. And so as I said earlier, we'd be coming to these items that are on the unfunded list, um, the five projects that were listed on that deferred, um, list earlier. So the, the five projects, the streetlight rehabilitation program, the Balboa Boulevard median improvement, Ocean Boulevard pedestrian improvement, uh, landscape enhancements, oceanfront boardwalk parking lot improvement studies. So those are those, the five projects that we are, we need direction on, um, to, uh, we're suggesting to program for this coming year. In addition, the general fund, or general plan update funding and, uh, permanent supportive housing funding. So a total of about $4.8 million.
I can add on this. So these are, um, as Jim talked earlier, as part of the COVID, um, budgeting that we did last year, we deferred, uh, uh, projects. Um, there are a set of projects that whether we found additional funding, or the budget got recalibrated, um, and we were able to absorb in, um, into the, um, annual $5 million budget, we put in for kind of baseline CIP. And so there, those are the top deferred projects that we knew, uh, we needed to move forward on. So those are in and proposed as new projects. Then this, uh, kind of group right here, are projects that we do feel should move forward. Um, could they wait a little bit? Um, you know, we could do that if we needed to, but they are the, kind of the next in line of priority that we'd want to move off the deferral. And we think, um, with our surpluses that we've had, um, that these would be, uh, good candidates, um, to be funded, um, with those funds. We're just holding right now, as we, you know, continue to look at what our budget picture looks like, to feel comfortable enough with that. So that's what we're kind of looking at. And then you had seen that last column, there are still projects that either, um, don't need to be funded, because the, the next, you know, set of, like, the construction costs and such will be in a future year. So, um, and others that we feel are okay to defer a little bit more. And that's, uh, we still have those. So we kind of have, uh, three buckets here that we've have laid out for you.
And just one clarification, Councilwoman Dixon, your conflict is in landscape enhancement. That's where the median project is at, the 350, if you can talk about that.
Yeah, and it probably makes sense, if you're going to give a specific input on these, to deal with the conflict issues first. So maybe, uh, I know LaLanne has a conflict on the oceanfront boardwalk, and then, uh, then Councilmember Dixon has a, a small conflict on a portion of the.
Step out right now for those two items?
You only need to step out for the landscape enhancement portion, um, that deals with Lido Isle.
All right, so should I, me do it now?
I, I think only if, if there are council members who want to talk specifically on those projects. If as a group, um, the council is feeling comfortable with what we have planned for, uh, this being the next group to move forward with, um, I think we're okay. But if there's specific of these projects that we're, want to specifically talk about.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yeah, I want to talk to just one of the specific projects, which is the first one up there, the streetlight rehabilitation program. Um, that, uh, that project is, and, it's the, kind of the final piece to, and, to rehabilitation program up in Spyglass. And, um, it's been really successful up there. They, when they made the, the changes, we were able to, you know, replace a lot of the circuits up there. We were able to, um, replace a lot of the area up there, where, with, uh, lights that are actually saving the city's a significant amount of money on the electricity. Um, then the, the other thing that we've noticed up there is that, uh, I've heard this from our PD and also from our, uh, neighborhood watch, that the lights, the light change up there has actually dramatically increased the visibility. And, uh, so we've, we've actually seen, um, you know, help with, uh, crime reduction in the area. Uh, folks probably don't remember this, but there were, you know, there, there, um, Spyglass used to get hit by rings of burglars, uh, for a while there. Uh, right now, one of the, well, for the last few years, one of the favored areas to come in has actually come on El Capitan Trail. And so that's why that's referenced right there. So, um, it's not often that, uh, the District Seven rep needs to go to bat for a CIP project. Um, but I would, I would ask that this actually be moved into the CIP. Uh, there, the, the, the changes are good for, for cost savings, although it will take obviously a while to do that. But the public safety aspects and enhancements up there have been pretty significant. I'd like to see that project finished up.
Okay. Ms. Brenner?
My question was on the money for the general plan update. Can you? Can you tell us what that money is going toward?
Phone has left me. This is part of the, the housing element, and then the circulation, and then we have to go into land use next on the element update. So this is a continuation of that full project. And as far as the estimates we're getting from the consultant is that we're going to need $650,000 in this upcoming fiscal year, and probably another $650,000 the year after that, to have, for the complete general plan update.
But these are primarily consultant fees?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
Which, which would encompass the entire drafting, you know, assisting with drafting up the actual elements, and the outreach pieces, and all those components together.
Ms. Dixon?
Just to follow up on that, going forward about initiating, although it's already started, the general plan update, so we've already started housing, and circulation, and land use, and then so if we wanted to continue to move forward, are these funds considered part of the moving forward to the balance of the general plan in '22, perhaps?
I actually think this is more, because the land use is kind of on the tail of the housing, and so I think a lot of this is for the land use piece of this.
But so...
And then the $650,000 the year after that, I think that finishes the rest of the, the core elements that we need to do.
Of the general, what do you mean by core? All of the, all of the elements?
You know what? I really need Simone to answer that question, to make sure I know what the, the full scope of that project is, and we can certainly get that back to you.
Okay, well, I'm supportive of what you're proposing. I just want to make sure that we keep pushing forward on the general plan, and chipping away with it, or do it holistically?
Right, yeah, and that, and that's our intention as well, to, to complete the whole general plan, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any more council comments? All right, so we'll take public comments now on this item?
I have a couple more slides, and they're just real quick.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Jim.
They're real quick.
Hang on just a sec. Yeah, go ahead.
So these are, just a look ahead, real quick, on some of the significant projects coming forward, and these are really the, the fiscal years that they would start construction in. Just a quick list there, some of them there. I'm not going to go through everyone, but, and, and we, we've done a five-year budget, so these are all falling in that budget. And then here's the last two years there, just again, as we look out further, some of those major projects, mostly the street improvement type. So that is it.
Great, thank you. So we're ready for public comments now.
Thank you, Mayor Avery, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I was wondering if we might get some further clarity on the Peninsula Encroachment Removal Program that we heard briefly about. As I understand it, this has to do with the city's obligation to remove some private yards that are extending onto the public beach at Peninsula Point near the wedge. We were told in the presentation this is going to be funded by the Oceanfront Encroachment Fund. Am I correct in understanding that the Oceanfront Encroachment Fund consists of the rent that is paid by oceanfront homeowners in West Newport, who are paying rent to use the city's 15 feet of boardwalk easement in front of their houses as part of their private yards? For years, they've been allowed to use what should be a boardwalk as their, part of their yard for paying rent. So if we're using that to pay for the Peninsula Point Encroachment Remove, Removal, I believe the homeowners in Peninsula Point had to pay fines to the Coastal Commission, which were effectively back rent, but it sounds like we're using West Newport money to pay for the removal of the private encroachments in East Peninsula, at Peninsula Point. Are those homeowners there being asked to contribute anything towards the city's cost of removing their encroachments onto the public beach? That is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anything on the phone? Okay, great, go ahead.
Hello? Hello?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Phil. My name is Bill Terramina. I own four pieces of property on Production Place in Newport Beach that operate six businesses that are international and local, and I want to endorse and highly recommend the rezoning of the area. I think it's a very wise decision, and I compliment the city council, the planning commission, and the staff. This is a wonderful idea, far, far approved by all of my neighbors, and I thank you so very much for your time, and I hope that you approve it.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Okay, so we'll go to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Mayor Avery, my name again is Jim Mosher. I had a non-agenda comment. For those listening at home who are wondering why the public is being allowed to speak directly to you instead from the community room across the way, it's because this evening, this afternoon, the community room is being used as a voting center. And in connection with that, I want to reiterate a comment I made, I think, last month. The election that is taking place in the community room tonight is a winner-take-all election involving five candidates running for one office. It's great that we have a lot of competition, a lot of people running. The problem is, in a winner-take-all election, it's very unlikely that any of the five are actually going to win a majority of the vote, and therefore, the person who is selected in the winner-take-all election could well be not the person that would have been selected had we had a runoff, and the majority could have expressed who they wanted through that process. There is a solution to this, which is quite simple. It's called ranked choice voting, in which the people casting their votes today could indicate not only their preference, but also who they would prefer if their first choice did not win. It would be a very good thing to institute in Newport Beach for our council elections. You have the power under our charter to do that by ordinance. You simply have to, to direct the clerk to hold the elections that way, and further, you need to convince our Orange County Registrar to get his voting system, which allows this, certified by the state, so that it can be used for that purpose. I strongly recommend that you pursue that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on agenda, non-agenda items? Any phone calls? All right, thanks. I'll close public comment, and before we adjourn to the closed session, Mr. Harp, you have an announcer?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. The city council will adjourn to closed session and meet with legal counsel to discuss the possibility of initiating litigation regards to one matter, and that's on the agenda under item 4A. Thank you.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to wish Angelina good luck. You're going to be a deputy city manager? In what city? Hermosa Beach. Congratulations. Thank you for your good work. Thank you.
All right, we'll adjourn to 6:25.